Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Council Vice President Escobar. Council President Socorro Ludwig.
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the City Court, has been placed an inappropriate bulletin board imposed on the back desk of the City Hall visible to the public through the windows in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely, The Home News. Do you stand with pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing in a moment of silence for all this suffering around the world and all those who protect us every day. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn for seven minutes, no doubt.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwig.
Do I abstain since I was not here? I wasn't here for the last meeting for the minutes.
Did you review the minutes?
I did. Yes. Madam Chair, has the correspondence been directed to the appropriate departments?
Yes, Madam President. The correspondence received by the City Court's office was forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you. I have no business tonight. We have no public hearings. We have ordinances on second reading, one in ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 17 zoning. This is to update recommendations, to update the master plan. I'll open the floor for anyone who'd like to make a comment. You have five minutes, one time up. Seeing none.
Move the ordinance, second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes. Two, amend the management salary ordinance for 2023 to 2025. I'll now open the floor to the public. If anybody wishes to speak, please step forward, state your name, and give the counsel their address.
Charlie Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I'd like to ask which positions are getting a raise, which ranges, and if you could tell me.
They've increased the range on 95 on that category, but there are no intended raises at this time.
Okay, so I see a few different positions in 95. Are there specific employees that should expect a raise?
None at this time.
No, okay. And just to be clear, the only change in this ordinance is range 95.
Mr. Cradaville, second.
That's current for right now. What's going to happen is each year for 2024 through 2025, the highest levels are going to increase to make sure that everybody stays compliant as their annual raises occur.
But at this time, no, I think that's the only change.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did want to just ask, I had sent an email to Mr. Shammy asking for this information prior to the meeting. Can he, through you, can he say if he received it at least? I want to make sure the message got through.
Do you receive an email?
I received, Mr. Cradaville, this evening.
He did.
I don't generally correspond except for the meeting people.
So.
If you go through the public information officer if he has a specific question. I get a lot of emails, Mr. Cradaville, sorry.
Okay, well, I won't take it personally, but I do think that, you know, this ordinance has three initials, AssignedToTKS. For the record, that's TK Shammy.
Yes.
So what we're hearing is if members of the public have questions, he's not available.
He said he can go through the public information officer if he wanted any more detail than what I provided you with.
Okay, I just thought AssignedTo meant this is the person to contact. I thought in the past when you said, you know, you don't have to wait for the meetings to ask your questions. This is what I thought you were talking about. So I hope that, you know, at a minimum, if something like that happens again, Mr. Shammy could write back and say, direct your question to so-and-so, and then I can direct the question there instead of just leaving me hanging.
Okay.
I would ask him that.
Oh, no problem. I'll note your comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore, Somerset Street. Well, give me a little more information. What department is this with management salary raise? I didn't see the other.
It is throughout various departments, and it increases the 95 range. They decap on that. But there are no intended raises at this point, like I just stated.
Well, when I'm asking what departments, management, what department of public work, what type of management do I see?
I'm fairly certain it's probably a 95 range in most departments. Yes.
So, wow, basically, I would just say sad to say what basically all the ones who do less work are getting a raise.
Ms. Moore, there are no raises, just to be clear. There are no raises with this ordinance. Are there any other speakers? Seeing none.
Move the ordinance, second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes. Next, we have an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.20, Handicap Parking, Section 10.20.010, Schedule 39 Parking Zones for Handicap Persons, Add 67 South Ward Street. I'll now open it up to the public. If anybody would like to make a comment or has questions on this. Seeing none.
Move the ordinance, second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes. Next, we have an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 13 Public Services, Chapter 13.04 Water Service System, Section 13.04.010, Chapter 13.08 Sewer Service System, Section 13.08.340, Schedule A. Schedule of Charges for Order Rate Sewer Rates. I'll now open this up to the public. Please step forward, state your name and address. You have five minutes to address the counsel.
Charlie Cradaville, once again, just like to get a breakdown of what the rates will be going forward.
There will be a 9% increase in 2023, an 8% increase in 2024, and an 8% increase in 2025. This is based on a five-year analysis that was completed off of the rates that were introduced in 2019, effective in 2020. And it may seem a little high, but effectually it amounts to about $3.81 a month per head in a household. And it also encompasses a lot of the upgrades that we're doing, all the new laws that are going into effect, the water treatment plan, capital improvements, and plus puts us back into the median of the national average across because we've been a little low on that.
Generally, a good thing to be low on things that cost people money.
No, I agree, but there's also the fact that we are doing tremendous amount of improvements with our water system, with the water treatment plant, and the new regulations that are coming through to make sure that our water standards are high. And we've also had the moratorium where we weren't allowed to raise the charges since COVID, and we weren't allowed to collect on some of the utilities either, and that has now been lifted.
So you mentioned an analysis that's been done over the past five years. Who did the analysis?
Mr. Cradaville, I'm going to ask you. I heard there were three parties involved, am I correct?
Yes, the city has an engineer who's a well-known rate setting, Howard Woods. He assisted us along with administration, finance, water and sewer team.
Thank you.
Howard Woods is the same guy brought in in 2013, correct?
I'm not sure.
After the whole scandal, the cover-up?
I'm not sure. I could find out for you. I don't have it. I don't have it right now.
Maybe I'm not sure of the difference, Mr. Cradaville.
Okay, no, I'm just curious, the same guy I know, and I recall from the past meetings or not. But yeah, I'd be curious to see that analysis. That something that can be shared with the public?
It's an internal analysis, and so it's in graph form.
When's it going to be completed?
I'll let you know. Still working on it. There's more to it than just these rates. There is the impact on other rates and other things we're studying.
Well, now I'm not clear on what's the scope of the work here.
Well, because it's residential. So this is residential, then there's other thing like there are bulk water raising. So there are other pieces of this that are going to come through as they're finished.
Understood. So tonight's 9% raise is only going to be for residential customers?
That's my understanding.
Not just residential, for those who pay in the city. It's commercial, residential, that's all the.
That's what I meant. I just meant it's not going to be any of those bulk contracts that we have with outside.
The Milltown, I'm pretty clear.
Yes, right.
Understood. Okay, so just the city stuff. Well, it is a steep price, right? Is there going to be any type of increase for the other towns, or they're already locked into?
That are pieces that we're still working on, that we don't have that information for yet. It's part of the analysis, ongoing analysis.
Okay, I just think as a matter of principle, it would make sense to release the information about what's causing you to increase the rates for every New Brunswick rate payer. I don't think it should be done on a secret, you know, analysis that can't be shared. So, you know, perhaps part of it can be shared if there's other parts that are still in the works, but I'm.
Well, I did just give you many facets other between the capital improvements, the new regulations, the moratorium, that has been with it. All of these factor into, you know, us being able to operate the water treatment plan in the correct way for the community.
I get that. I, you know, respectfully want to hear it from the expert, right? If we're paying Howard Woods for his expertise, you know, I think the public deserves, you know, his analysis on why you're going to increase the rates for people to buy water. So that's just my take, and I will follow up, hoping to transparece. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore. Well, one thing I would like to say, once this does go through, will this be reported, if I'm saying it correctly, to the rent control program? Where about, maybe Mr. Cradaville can help me out due to where that was my second time going through with the rent control?
There are pieces of, I have rent control. There are pieces of contracts and leases, I believe, that are regulated to some degree on, I think we just implemented that on when people pay water, when they pay sewer, and that process. But anything that we do here, they would certainly have the information on.
Well, due to where I know you did pass something through before with the situation with the wall water, and honestly, due to where a lot of people still have been coming down, due to where they've been getting cheated out of it, due to where, like I said, where most of these houses, they don't have the proper meters, separate meters, and what was the use of passing that through the city council due to where it's not helping people who are renting? That's my point of, like I said, you're saying the price is going to go up. Where, please, I hope this connection with this one to go through and the other one you approved, saying that it would help people, and it's not. You're not making the landlords getting the right meters, separate meters, for these locations. Like I said, due to where at the meeting, Mr. Charlie Cradaville had been coming with me, due to where, what, if you have 10 people that live on one floor, three people on the other floor?
This is not about the compliance issue. Do you have any questions on this?
I hope you introduce all of this to the rent controls so they can get these notices out to the landlord to make sure things.
They will have the information and will fulfill.
Thank you. That's all I have to say, due to where I see a lot of things going through when it's not properly.
Okay, Mr.?
I just wanted to address about the water bill and the rent control stuff. If anyone has any issues with their rent control in terms of their landlords not providing them their water bill, et cetera, they can come to our office. We can handle complaints. We do handle complaints. We've had a few on water, but not too many. So if you know anyone, you can send them to us, and we'll handle it. Additionally, as every year, we send out notice with the rent control updates and all those other factors. We're about to mail it out in the beginning of January. And so we did the rent control change with the water, I believe it was May or June. And so every landlord, and I believe several tenants, will also be notified. I think it goes one mailing to every property and one mailing to every landlord, and they'll be notified of those changes and updates that happened last year, or this year. And they'll know, be specifically notified about the water changes.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else on this ordinance? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance, second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes. Next, we have a resolution we need to read before we do the ordinance. That's a resolution to amend ordinance 0122204 on second reading to make effective immediately. Can I have a motion on that?
Motion.
Taken. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar, yes. Council President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes. And now we have the ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.12 Traffic Control Regulations, Section 10.12.020, Schedule 4 One-Way Streets, Chapter 10.12 Traffic Control Regulations, Section 10.12.100, Schedule 7 Bus Stops, and Chapter 10.16 Stopping, Standing, or Parking, Section 10.16.020, Schedule 24, No Parking at Any Time. In regard to Spring Street, I'll open this up to the public. You have five minutes, one time up.
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore. Due to where, I would just say on this matter, due to where I spoke to Mr. Relletly and Mr. Sanders, due to where I just have to say I don't feel comfortable with a lot of these things, but I pray that it works due to where if you take the time to see what goes on for the safety of our pedestrians. But I would just say, everything looks great for us for this to be a good project. I will thank Mr. Ron Sanders and his team so much for taking the time to really go over this and listen to me and understand changes on this. I would just say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Is anyone else wish to speak on this? Seeing none?
Move the resolutions. Ordnance is ordered, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes. We have nothing on first reading. We have ordinances 1 through 36 at this time. I'll open it up. I'm sorry. We have resolutions 1 through 36. I'll open it up to the public. You have five minutes, one time up. When you address the counsel.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradaville. I'd like to start with number 16, is the contract for the license plate readers. How many of those is the city going to keep?
Deputy Director Miller, is there, do you even know the amount of readers we're purchasing with this?
This is for two.
For two, Mr. Cradaville.
Two, okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to number 20, the Cable Television Advisory Committee. When was the last time this committee had a meeting?
Mr. Barr, is that making me aware of one then? I'm not sure, Mr. Cradaville.
Okay. To my knowledge, it's been years. I'd like to ask about the next one, the new member of the Parking Authority Board. Can anyone speak to this person and their qualifications while you're consenting to the appointment?
Mr. Barr, will you speak to this as well?
What's the number, Madam President?
Maria Soto for the Parking Authority.
Number 22?
Yes.
Just a lot of several people who are on the agenda tonight to fill some critical positions for some boards and some committees going forward. And has been.
Vetted properly.
Yes, through the office, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody on the council know Ms. Soto?
I do.
I do.
Okay, great. And you think she's a good fit for the Parking Authority Board?
Absolutely.
Can you speak to any of her qualifications? What makes you say that?
I know that she's a very committed person to the community. She's a very well-respected, she's an intelligent woman, and I think she'll do very well.
Okay. Thank you. 33, it's UEZ, $120,000 grant. Can you tell me, you know, what this is going to fund? Is this a person's salary or a number of people?
This is going towards personnel, consultant, and materials. For the grant program.
Okay, and what personnel will that be?
Mr. Demme.
So effective July 1st of this year, we transitioned Maria Cody from running rent control to becoming the UEZ Coordinator, and Patricia Vera from running control stepped up into that position. So that's covering her salary, support staff from other members of the office, covering their time and consulting to backfill and support the efforts of the UEZ grant program in general.
Thank you.
And can you tell me what the goal of the program is?
So the UEZ program is a grant program from the state of New Jersey. They take tax funds, sales tax funds from urban areas, and they redistribute them back to those areas as a grant program. We used to have it, the city administration shuttered it, they brought it back somewhat recently. And so we've gotten our allocations, and we're trying to deploy them. And we can use the funds to make improvements in those urban enterprise zones with a tieback to job creation in those areas.
The very next one is a state grant neighborhood preservation program, year three. Can you tell me what the specifics of this are, you know, who's going to be assisted in?
I think this is for the Esperon neighborhood for improvement, newer programming, just to enhance the neighborhood.
The next one is the Clean Energy Planning Grant Consultant. I wanted to ask if there's a goal for this, what you're hoping to get out of it?
Yeah, we're going to have them develop a clean energy plan for us that the city can refer to.
Wonderful. I applaud that. Glad to see that happening. And then the final one on your agenda is authorization to advertise. I presume this is for recycling pickup? Does this mean that we're breaking with the county and not going to continue with them, or?
Well, this is for the county. The contract is up in March, so we're putting this up to bid. It will be RFP, so we have all the information that we need. But it's my understanding that interstate has been very accommodating in the past year, but we will be looking at everything as a whole to make sure that we get the compensation.
So just to be clear, you're doing a public bid?
Yes.
And so anybody who's eligible can apply?
Yes.
Okay, well, it's interesting. I'm glad to see this, too. I think this is something that the city should have done. And yeah, thank you for answering the questions.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore. I'd like to go to 16 and with another set of cameras that you'll be purchasing. You said these are to read license plates.
Correct.
Due to where, is this, what, this New Jersey license plate or all license plates? And I would get to read while I'm asking that.
That particular, Deputy Director, do these read outside state plates or just ours?
All plates.
All plates, Ms. Moore.
Well, either way, I'm very disappointed to see that the mayor and new council members are doing this due to where I feel, like I said, due to where this is the second time where I feel that New Brunswick Police Department isn't doing their job with checking people with their license plates due to where, what, I remember what if you used to be a resident of New Brunswick, New Jersey, you weren't able to have Pennsylvania license plates doing this due to where I have to say, very disappointing, what a sorry job that New Brunswick Police Department is doing with far as with license plates, driver's license. I'm not the only one to feel that I would speak to that when I come to my other comments with the statements on this. But wow, like you're taking the job away from what New Brunswick Police Department is doing. Wow, can they, wow, sit on the corner sometime, get these people? Due to where I'm not the only one, even though what you want to mention that what my nephew was driving with no license. Like I said, when I read the statements from the article, what people are seeing, how many people that you really have driving through New Brunswick with fake license plates, illegal license, due to where, come on. But you keep putting cameras up. What is New Brunswick Police Department doing?
This enhances their ability to have information and gather the data that they need to be more productive.
Every since you put, every since the cameras were put on the corner of Livingston and Sanford Street, like I said, due to where, what, do you see the police department out anymore inspecting, giving out tickets for speeding? Come on, how many crashes have we had since this last meeting? Between at least eight car crashes? Please, what are you keep purchasing things for? Due to where, what, what is New Brunswick Police Department to be doing?
Anyone else on the resolutions? Seeing none?
Move the resolutions, second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes. Do I have the councilman, Council Vice President Escobar, any comment you'd like to make this evening?
I just want to say again, these past weekend, we had a lot of activities, Christmas activities for the community. So thank you for those, we just distributed over $600 toys, thanks to the police department, New Brunswick Police Department, New Brunswick University Hospital, and other partners that was Sedan Street Reform Church. I know the city has also had the Winter Wonderland, so I am happy to see that our kids, at least this week, had a great opportunity to enjoy the beginning of a great season.
Councilwoman Anderson?
Just to wish a very Merry Christmas and a Happy Holiday to all the departments and their employees, and everybody who works for the city.
Councilwoman Egan?
Yes, everybody. Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, good health, and a good New Year.
Councilman Fleming?
Just Happy Holidays, and keep in mind that people are defending the country around the world. This will probably be, yes, this will be the first Christmas, my son is overseas, and he hasn't been home for Christmas. A lot of his friends are gathering. Just keep your prayer.
Thank everyone for their service. And next, I'll open it up for a public comment. This is public comment only, not a question-answer session. You have five minutes, one time up. When you address the counsel, please give your name and address. I'll give you the first speaker. You can make the line before them.
Now, honestly, I will say sad to see, due to where two people lost their life out of the past week, due to where I would say, once again, please, I hope people will stop giving cash out to our panhandlers due to where we have lost another one, due to where this is the fifth one in three months. Like I said, due to where sometimes you think that you're helping people, and you're not. And then I would prove the one thing, say to the police department, maybe now they will understand, especially on Thanksgiving, why I was down on George Street instead of with my family, were witnessing money being given to someone, and then things to help out, and then due to where, like I said, some people think you're helping, and then what? Later on, what, with the drugs on the street, like I said, sad to say, wow, 12 deaths, at least 12 deaths of fentanyl since June. Like I said, five panhandlers are going to go and do to where, do I feel New Brunswick Police Department is doing their job? No, they are not. The second one, due to where sad to see the young lady, 20 years old, to lose her life on Sedan Street, due to where, what, a unlicensed driver driving under their influence? Please, tell me, what is New Brunswick getting paid for? Please, like I said, am I the only one to really, I may be the only one to speak the truth to come down here, but you council members, please, read the articles under Mr. Chuck O'Donnell, then the other article. Ooh, please crack down on these people who are driving illegally, period, period. There are tons of them in New Brunswick. Wow, they need to start stopping speeders, period. Please, tell me, what is New Brunswick Police Department getting paid to do? Sit on their ass, and I mean, wow, it hurts to say it after seeing a young lady that I knew, 20 years old, due to where, what, lose her life? But wow, one thing I will say from the last meeting, how many crashes have we had since this last meeting, at least eight? Please, wow, all dealing with speeding. What is New Brunswick Police Department doing? Do you see this in North Brunswick, Holland Park? What, do New Brunswick even give out tickets anymore? Please, what's going on? And like I said, I'm not the only one to see that. Please, I would love to see New Brunswick start cracking on all of these drugs that are in the street. For example, wow, you have three overdoses in the same location. Well, that was one time on French Street. I said, please, are you going to investigate this? What, the detective tells me that, oh, I have to go down to make a complaint on the drugs in the area? Please, like I said, New Brunswick Police Department is getting paid too much money to sit on their ass. And like I said, it's heartbreaking to see so many lives going. Wow, that can be avoided if New Brunswick Police Department would do a better job. wow, that can be avoided if New Brunswick Police Department would do a better job. Can you speed through Holland Park and you speed through North Brunswick? Please, it's not even safe out here. What, forty-five years that I have been here, a resident in New Brunswick? Please, and do you think, like I said, it's only only two reasons why I only continue to stay in New Brunswick, that's because I don't drive, but believe me, it's getting outrageous, and like I said, with all these deaths that's going on between one and the other? Please, I think it's time New Brunswick Police Department needs to do a better job. And I will say, due to where I'm not sure if the contract is going to run out soon, far as the 911, 745, 5200, is it time to renew it? But like I said, that needs to go back to New Brunswick Police Department, due to where it is taking too long for calls to go through. For example, that was last month, okay, a transformer blew, I waited fifteen minutes, I called the police department, oh no, we didn't get any message, anything happened? No, no, then I called about ten minutes later, and then if it's recorded, it should be recorded, due to where it said, oh yes, we did just get the message. So it shouldn't take no fifteen to twenty minutes to get a call from Rutgers to New Brunswick. And like I said, when I say, think about it, Rutgers Village, how long, if it takes twenty-five minutes for an ambulance or police to come here, wow, you better think about how long it's going to take to go to Rutgers Village. And please, take me seriously when I say, wow, you do not need to renew that contract, put it back to New Brunswick, because I see cases that are being hidden from Rutgers Police Department that doesn't even go to New Brunswick Police Department. And I have proved that several times when I was down there with pictures, oh, we don't know what you're talking about. So like I said, please, like I said, a lot needs to be done more as a resident of forty-five years with New Brunswick Police Department.
I'll have the next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Elmira, I'm working for New Brunswick tomorrow, and I'm here today with my fellow neighbors and members of the Esperanza Neighborhood Project and Association. Our tenant group is dedicated to guiding and orienting the community about their rights as tenants. In May, we came here to send the council to approving an update to the rent control ordinance to protect tenants from unfair charges in water bills. Today, we are here to share our concerns about the new permitted rate increase for 2023. Not long ago, we learned that the rate increase for the next year would be the 5.5%. Our group is very concerned about the impact of this increase on New Brunswick tenants. Many families are already struggling to pay the rent bills, such as this increase will increase evictions, overcrowding of housing, and make many families cut back on modern necessities livelihood. I will present one of the neighbors here.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Veronica, y soy miembro de la Asociación de Inquilinos. Para continuar lo que decías, Elmira, entendemos que el aumento del cinco punto, cinco por ciento se basa en las tasas de influencia estableci, inflación establecidas por la ordenanza de control de rentas. Sabemos que el consejo no suele tomar medidas sobre estos aumentos anuales de renta. Sin embargo, en nombre de los residentes de New Brunswick, solicitamos al consejo y a la ciudad que tomen medidas para evitar que este aumento entre en vigencia.
Good evening, my name is Veronica. We understand that the 5.5% increase is based on the rate inflation that are established by rent control ordinance. We know the council doesn't unusual take action on this annual rate increase. However, on behalf of the New Brunswick resident, we ask the council and the city to take action to prevent this increase from taking effect.
Durante muchos años, el aumento máximo anual de la renta fue del 2.5% y no teníamos que pensar en el máximo más alto, pero hemos investigado las ordenanzas de control de renta de otras ciudades y aprendimos que muchas tienen aumentos máximo más bajos. El máximo de Nueva York, de Newark, es el cuatro por ciento, el de Elizabeth, el de Elizabeth es del tres por ciento, y el de Franklin es el tres por ciento o tres puntos cinco por ciento. Hace solo unos meses, el Consejo de Perthamboy aprobó un cambio para reducir el máximo del cinco por ciento al tres por ciento.
For many years, the annual maximum rate increase was 2.5%, and we didn't have to think about a higher maximum. But we have researched for cities' rent control ordinance and learned that many have lower maximum increase. Newark maximum is four percent, Elizabeth is three percent, Franklin is three percent or three point five percent. Just few months ago, Perthamboy Council approved a change to lower their maximum from five percent to three percent.
Si la inflación hace calmente el costo de mantenimiento de las propiedades, los propietarios tienen la opción de solicitar a la junta de control de renta un recargo por dificultades económicas, pero si los inquilinos no pueden pagar un aumento del cinco punto cinco por ciento, no tenemos buenas opciones. Ya estamos, ya estamos en una crisis de vivienda en Nueva Jersey, y esto hará peores las cosas. Le pedimos a este consejo que defienda nuevamente a los inquilinos vulnerables. Ofrecemos nuestro apoyo para encontrar una solución. Gracias.
If inflation causes the cost maintaining properties to increase, landlords have the option to apply the rent control board for hardship searchers. But if tenants can pay an increase of 5.5%, we have no good options. We are ready in a housing crisis in New Jersey, and this will be making worse. We ask the council to stand up for vulnerable tenants' rights and offer our support to find solutions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Y bueno, felices fiestas a todos ustedes.
Happy Holidays to all of you.
Gracias por escucharnos.
Thank you for listening to us.
Primeramente quiero, mi nombre es Cristina Paredes.
First of all, my name is Elmira Pata, Cristina Paredes.
I'm a part of the Esperanza.
I'm also part of the Esperanza Neighborhood Project.
And the Inquilinos in New Brunswick.
And part of the tenant association here in New Brunswick.
Primeramente, estas fiestas pues recibimos con angustia este aumento para el próximo año.
First of all, like, before anything else, during the holidays, when we learned about the increase, we heard this and were very concerned when we heard about it.
I'm here speaking on behalf of a lot of community residents here in the community. Tal vez el consejo no sabe de un aumento, por ejemplo, si uno paga mil ochocientos la renta, el aumento va a ser de cien dólares para el bolsillo de una cabeza de familia de tres o cinco hijos.
Probably the council is not aware of how this is an impact, but, you know, considering, for example, when a family pays monthly rent of a thousand eight hundred, an increase of, with the new increase of 5.5%, it would be about a hundred dollars for a family size of either three kids or a family size of three or five.
Y estamos, bueno, quiero dar mi testimonio porque siento que esto va a ser, la inflación ha subido en la comunidad, tanto en alimentos, combustible, pero el sueldo no ha subido en base en la inflación.
First, I would like to start and share a little bit of my testimony, you know, considering the inflation rates, everything going up, the gas prices, prices, you know, we need to buy groceries, but the concern here is also, you know, the salary or wages have not increased.
Entonces quiero al consejo que también considere todo esto, porque la comunidad no está conforme con este aumento.
So I ask, please, to the council to consider the request of the situation, because our community is definitely going to be impacted, and it's not happy and it's concerned about the situation.
Siento que el consejo anteriormente ha trabajado con la comunidad, y pues espero que nos escuchen esta vez y consideren que la comunidad pues está sufriendo también el impacto de la pandemia, de la inflación, y pues nos gustó este aumento.
And you know, the council has worked previously with the community, and, you know, we would appreciate and really hope that you can consider the request of taking this further, because, you know, the inflation is going to be impacting the rest of the community, and this is something that, they're going to be impacted, but it's going to affect it. We're still struggling here, you know, thanks from the pandemic, and now entering in this inflation is going to affect tremendously the community.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Ricardo Larcía.
My name is Ricardo Larcía.
Y participo mucho en las organizaciones trabajando para la comunidad de New Brunswick.
I participate in many organizations and support here the community here in New Brunswick.
Y voy a contarles mi experiencia muy personal.
I would like to share a little bit of my personal experience.
Mi esposo se tuvo que ir a México porque su mamá estaba muy enferma.
My husband had to leave to Mexico because his mother was very sick.
Y al mismo tiempo teníamos que cambiarnos de departamento.
So at the same time as it was sold, we had to look for a new apartment.
Fue muy difícil encontrar uno.
It was very difficult to find one.
Porque los precios están muy altos.
Because the price range are very high.
Y toda la responsabilidad de la renta es ahora para mí.
And all the responsibility of paying the rent now falls under me.
Tengo que pagar mil ochocientos de renta.
I have to pay about a thousand eight hundred for rent.
Y si aumenta el cinco punto cinco por ciento, ahora tendré que pagar mil novecientos.
So now, with the new increase, then I would have to be paying about one thousand nine hundred.
Ahora estoy llevando dos trabajos.
Now, currently working two jobs.
Porque, este, mis hijas no pueden, tienen un trabajo de medio tiempo.
Because my daughters, even though they work and they have a part-time job.
Y tienen que estudiar también.
While also studying.
Entonces, yo tengo que ser la responsable más por la renta.
So I'm the person, the main person responsible for paying the rent.
Y el salario que yo gano no es suficiente para pagar mil novecientos dólares.
And the salary that I'm earning is not even sufficient to pay, keep up with the rent for one thousand nine hundred.
Siempre hemos venido aquí para trabajar junto con ustedes.
And we have always come here to work together with the council.
Para poder encontrar una solución.
To work and find a solution.
Porque yo sé que no soy la única, hay muchas familias como yo.
Because I know I'm not the only resident, and there's a lot of people in the community that have similar experiences.
Y yo tengo mucha fe en que ustedes puedan ayudar a la comunidad de New Brunswick.
And I have faith in you guys to help or work with us together to help the community.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, please. Do I have any other speakers?
Hi, good evening. My name is Yoshi. I'm a Code Blue volunteer, three times this season so far, and I want to first thank New Brunswick City for providing the warming center this season, as you know, it's bitterly cold in the evenings, and I think the next few days, we're going to see temperatures drop to twenty. However, what I and other volunteers at the warming center at 81 Remsen Street, the Unity Square Community Center, second floor, is, the conditions are quite horrific, and I would like the New Brunswick City to take note and address these. Number one, the cots and the blankets are not sanitized, and every time we come back, it is left exactly as it is, the prior shift that we volunteered. So there's like no washing done, and I think like you and I know, like, being, under normal circumstances, you know, this is horrific enough, but we are in a pandemic or entering the triple pandemic, and this is just a health emergency, you know, waiting to happen. Number two, the men's restroom has a sensor for the sink. I assume this was a measure to allow for contactless washing, but the sensor has been broken on the first shift we've been there, and last, this early morning when we returned, the sensor has not yet been fixed, even though this has supposedly been brought to the attention of those who are in charge of the warming center. This has to be addressed, otherwise, people cannot wash up and must rely on just the other restroom that does have a faucet that does not have a sensor and just a traditional, you know, faucet handle. Number three, the announcements make it quite clear that, yes, we are still in a COVID pandemic and masks are required, but considering that the Housers community with their meager resources can't access these masks and it is not provided at the warming center, I don't see how New Brunswick City can expect that the members of the Housers community can protect one another and also protect us volunteers. So those are really the top three items, and I appeal to New Brunswick City to use the ninety thousand dollars that you allocate to the warming center to address these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Have the next speaker, please.
Hello, good evening. My name is Owen, and I've also been volunteering at the Code Blue Shelter, the Unity Community Center, the warming center there, and I was also surprised to find the conditions to be unsanitary, inhospitable, and unacceptable treatment of people in the most dire need in our community on cold nights in the winter. I was also surprised to learn there's some research that the city has rejected funding to improve this program, and was curious the rationale for that rejection of those funds. I've seen how the funds could be used, and wanted to make the city aware that we weren't already about these conditions. The bathrooms appear to be rarely if ever cleaned. I volunteer multiple times and I've seen no improvement or cleaning. Sometimes the volunteers could do it ourselves. The men's bathroom, as was mentioned, has no running water, and I've been told it hasn't been fixed for a month, so it's completely neglected. The blankets and the cots are dirty and unsanitized and also appear to be rarely if ever cleaned. People come in and sleep on the same blankets that they wore the night before or shared blankets with somebody else. This seems to be unacceptable to me, especially as we are facing a triple pandemic, as was mentioned already. Also, there are no masks provided, even though this is recommended in the law that established the Code Blue program. It was recommended to provide masks for people, there are no such resources. And another point is that the hours, limited hours of 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, and the restriction about leaving after coming in, really limit people's ability to take care of themselves. I've seen a diabetic there who came in at 7:00 PM and who was not allowed to leave just to get a snack from across the street. That also makes it difficult, since they're forced out at 7:00 AM, there's nowhere else warm to go, and it's not exactly a lot warmer at 7:00 AM in the morning, and other places aren't open till at least 10:00. So I've asked the city to consider extending those hours to provide services for these people in dire need. Finally, the employees who are responsible for renting this shelter are poorly paid and under supported. They could use more assistance from the city in maintaining this important program. They face folks who are struggling with addiction, sometimes ODing on the site, and they are the only ones there responsible for dealing with the situation. I think the city should have more staff, more paid staff, social workers potentially on site to help people in need in this situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is anyone else on the street? Last call.
Brittany, go first.
Brittany, you would just send the Biston Avenue. It's sad to see these guys come and complain to you or make you aware of things that you're not going to change, because just as well as I heard about the rent increase, imagine working for the city and you can't afford to live in the city that you work for because of these increases. You don't care. We brought that up. About the homeless, how sanitation plays a part in the homeless situation is, you send us to clean up their homeless situation is you send us to clean up their stuff when they're in the shelter to throw it out. So maybe that's probably why they don't have any masks. You don't give them any resources. It's just when they leave their things there, they send the garbage and they're like, they come and clean up their things. Um, so I just want to make these people here aware of what's going to be happening with Department of Public Waste. Um, our contract negotiation, um, like the president always uses that against us, the bargaining system. Um, we're in the middle of contract negotiations and behind the scenes you guys made it aware that you didn't want me a part of that contract negotiation because I'm the only one that asks the right questions. I'm the only one that's been fighting for better treatment of your workers and higher paid, um, and to be paid more, um, respectfully. Um, so you had another person replace something I should have been doing, I guess, in cahoots with the union behind the scenes, which also does not protect us. Um, and that contract was not finalized. Our contract is supposed to be finalized December thirty-first, um, of this year and the new contract is supposed to be distributed after, um, January first. It's not. Um, you didn't come to an agreement and now the next meeting is sometime in January. So I'm here to tell you personally that, um, if the contract is not finished in the proper time, um, we won't pick up any of your garbage. I will see to it. Um, we will strike on our own time. If you have any questions, comments or concerns, we're Channel Fox, Fox Live News and Channel Twelve News will be right here in front of your city hall, um, sometime next week. I'm not going to tell you today. Uh, maybe you'll see when there's a mob of people out there, um, explaining to the world, um, the discrepancies that you do with our budget and you're not willing to see the hard work that we put in with just the garbage. Um, and we will do it on our own time. So please don't give us the, oh, it's illegal to strike because it's not on our own time. So, um, you need to see the seriousness. I've, we, you've had ample time to look into this contract. I've been coming down here fighting since last summer. I've tried to go to you calmly and respectfully. That didn't work. You just retaliated, um, with me and whoever stood with me behind the scenes. You have to get that contract done. You guys don't want to give these guys a raise. We've been picking up your garbage and now the hard part is about to start with the cold weather. We are picking up homeless people's feces and piss bottles. They're items for no reason. We're cleaning that up. Um, we also deal with, um, urban areas with the drug overdoses, the needles in the garbage. We've illegally picked up your hospital garbage. We're picking up your wood and construction and all of these things that we're not supposed to be picking up. We pick it up because you make it our job and we want to be treated and respectfully paid for the things that we're doing. That's the least you could do. Um, we've given you respectfully the demands that we asked for because you guys haven't given us any raise. Any raise that you've given us, which was ten cents, five cents, quarter, you've always raised the insurance up to match that raise, so we don't even see it. So, um, this is not anything new. The person that controlled, one of the people that controls our budget, he knows, we've been there. And if you do not, once again, look into this contract, then we will not pick up your garbage. I will see to it. And then you can really see how nasty the city of New Brunswick is. These guys deserve for you to pay attention to what's going on. You don't care. We get it. But you're going to care. When you see the garbage, the rats, the raccoons, the possums, the deers that are going to come out in those nice little neighborhoods on Dewey Drive and Verka's Village, you're going to see it. You're going to get a little piece of what the city, inner city people that you don't care about deal with every day. You have to see it. We need you to look into that contract. You keep using the bargaining agreement, talk to your union, what we did. That contract is supposed to be done at the end of this month. If it's not done, you won't get your garbage picked up because there's no contract. You need to look into it. There will be a strike here. If you want to speak to the news, you can explain yourself to them.
Next speaker, please. Mr. Crowe.
Yes, Charlie Crowe. Uh, I want to start by saying I'm proud of the people who showed up and spoke up tonight and wish everyone here and everybody watching out there a very happy and healthy holiday season. Um, am I correct? This is the last meeting of the year or you're not doing us in a day of meeting anymore?
We don't need it this year. We can handle this. It's immediate too tonight, so we have to have that actual meeting.
Okay. Um, is there going to be a swearing in ceremony for the victors of the election?
I'm not aware. I believe.
Yes, January second.
January second here in council chambers.
No.
Okay, where?
The New Brunswick Forum House.
Great. Um, and, you know, congratulations. You know, you didn't have an opponent, but nevertheless, congratulations on, uh, your next term. And, uh, I do want to note that, you know, we've been through a lot this year. I think when we started the year, the meetings were still on the telephone and, uh, you know, things have gotten better in some ways and worse in others. You know, we see folks upset about a, a huge potential rent increase coming their way and, uh, you know, frankly, the city hall is still not fully open. The front doors are still locked. You have people stopping folks on the way back in and, you know, these meetings are, uh, not available to people who can't make it if somebody's sick or caring for somebody who's sick or has some other reason they can't be here. You can't speak directly to your elected officials. I know the police director had one public event all year and continues to be elusive and, uh, you know, a lot of the people that are making big decisions are not accountable and accessible. I think now that folks are speaking out about Code Blue, I'd like to remind you that I've been speaking out about that for a while and I think I have a better idea of why a rule was made up to prevent me from volunteering in there because you didn't want me to see what was going on. And it's unfortunate that, you know, that attitude has delayed the inevitable, that now it's coming out that the conditions are not very good and maybe that's why not so many people use it. And we need to rethink it. We need more funding. We need more services and we need a better location with better hours because currently we are failing the houseless community and I see it every day. We, we can do better and we have to do better in 2023. Also, uh, you know, rest in peace to the young woman whose life came to an end at Sedam and Railroad. That is a dangerous intersection. It's been a dangerous intersection the entire time I've been in New Brunswick and the city needs to step up since those are city streets. And we've got to do something before another life is lost or another person, another family is, is affected, uh, by that dangerous situation that's allowed to persist. I encourage people to continue to come to traffic commission meetings. Usually it's just me and Danielle, but I'm pleased to report the traffic commission will now have half of their meetings at a time that's reasonable for the public to get there in the evening. And I encourage people to raise concerns about dangerous intersections, dangerous situations. I want to follow up on another issue. The Housing Authority Executive Director has no contract, but, uh, folks on the council were under the impression he had a contract that said he only has to work thirty-five hours and that's supposed to justify why he can go out and work, uh, you know, three or four other jobs. And I wanted to ask if, if there's anything that council has to say about that. I did follow up with Council Vice President Escobar after the last meeting. She said she wasn't ready to comment, uh, because that was new information that there is no contract for John Clark. Can I get a comment from Council, Councilman Escobar?
I don't have a comment at this time, Mr. Crowe, or whatever. I'll get a comment, please.
Okay, finally, May twentieth, twenty-two, there was an article in Tap into New Brunswick Councilman accused of sexual harassment. Um, this was talked about previously before. It's my understanding the case is active and I'd like to ask through you, Madam Chair for Councilman Fleming, who is paying his legal bills in that case?
We're not going to discuss that. I'm not going to answer Mr. Fleming to address that.
Is it the city of New Brunswick paying the legal bills?
This is not a question and answer session, Mr. Crowe.
If tax money is going to pay legal bills, it is a matter of public interest, public concern and just like to get a straight answer. I heard that. I'm here to verify whether it's true or not.
You can make your comments. I'll note them down, but I have no comment and I'm not going to answer, uh, Councilman Fleming's question.
Well, I would hope he would want to address it. Can we, can you allow him to address it?
If you would like, uh, Councilman.
No, Mr..
No comment on who's paying the legal bills.
That's all right. We have more comments. Make these make one, Mr. Crowe.
Through you, Madam Chair for the city attorney. Can you ask the city attorney if the city involved in paying any of the bills in this civil lawsuit?
No, cannot. There's no comment on this.
You can't, you can't ask the city attorney if he's willing to state that, yes or no? A simple question.
Your time has expired.
Happy holidays.
I'll have the next speaker, please.
Buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Jordana.
Mi nombre es Jordana.
Soy residente de New Brunswick por diecisiete años.
I've been a resident in New Brunswick for seventeen years.
Y quiero comentarles cómo nos afecta a las familias.
Yeah, I would like to come, comment how it's affecting our families.
El aumento del cinco punto cinco por ciento.
The rent increase of five point five percent.
Somos familias muchas como yo.
There's a lot of families just like, like myself.
Que estamos recuperándonos de estragos que todos pasamos y ahora el estado de New Jersey nos promete tres centavos de aumento en el salario mínimo.
There are many families, uh, who are still struggling and now the state of New Jersey is offering the increase of a point thirteen cents for, in our wages.
Y, y nos aumentan cien dólares de renta por, por mes.
By then they increased the, uh, the rent to about a hundred dollars per month.
Eso para nosotros es algo muy difícil porque en los trabajos que nosotros hacemos el salario es el mínimo.
For us, that's very difficult because at our current jobs here in the state, uh, we work very hard, but yet the increase, uh, it's the minimum.
Y esto para las familias que aquí en New Brunswick, somos bastantes familias hispanas que tenemos el mismo patrón. Trabajamos día a día para sobrevivir, solamente para sobrevivir. Y esto nos afecta demasiado negativamente.
So this is going to impact us very negatively as there's a lot of families like myself here living in, in New Brunswick who work day to day very hard, long hours, uh, just to try to make, uh, meat stand.
So yo les pido, por favor, que reconsideren y busquen una forma de cómo aliviar esto porque realmente es, cada día vemos nuestro sueño más lejos. El sueño de, de poder comprar una casa, el sueño de poder, eh, normalizar, tener una vida normal, cada vez se ve más lejos. ¿Por qué? Porque nuestro, nuestro salario es bien pobre y nuestros gastos son cada vez más. La canasta básica está completamente caro todo y ahora nos toca cubrir una renta más cara y eventualmente van a tener muchas familias bajo del puente porque sinceramente no se puede vivir con estos costos.
So please, I ask you to consider this, uh, the, the rent increase as this is going to, like I said, impact many families. Uh, we work very hard and with this rent, rent increase is going to impact also our ability. Some of us, it's still, it's going to push us further to try to, uh, some of us have ideas or a dream to buy a home and this is just going to push it further as we, uh, put our money in, you know, more to the rent increase. Um, and at some point it just feels like it's just going to put us below the threshold and there's going to be, uh, more families, uh, more vulnerable families potentially coming, becoming homeless.
Yeah. Y lo, lo otro es que no solo nos toca pagar la renta, nos toca pagar tickets porque no hay donde estacionarse, nos toca pagar la luz, el gas y un sin número de cosas. Y muchas de nuestras familias llevamos dos gastos porque sostenemos nuestra familia acá y sostenemos nuestra familia en nuestro país de origen. Nuestra vida es difícil y, y muchos nos, nos miran como desconsideradamente, pero realmente somos personas como todos y debemos tener nuestros derechos y debemos ser escuchados. Y ustedes podrían tener un poco de humanización y considerar. Gracias.
So for us, the, paying the rent is not the only thing that we are responsible. We also have to pay sometimes tickets for, you know, not finding parking spaces here in the city, uh, but other bills, uh, like electricity bills, water bills that we are responsible for paying and it's, it's, uh, many families and I, sometimes we, it may feel or seem that, uh, you know, feeling considerate of this, of the situation, but we hope that you, uh, can, can work together to help us find a solution, um, because, you know, we continue to, to work hard. We continue to work hard. Uh, there's many families that will be impacted by this. Um, so thank you.
If you could say that for longer, because if you would translate for me, I have a surprise. I would just like to say that we do understand that this, this is the, maybe difficult with, with the, uh, rent increase and it's a high percentage and it is something...
Quisiera decir que sí entendemos la situación y que este, este es un porcentaje de renta pues muy grande, muy alto.
And it is something that the council will look at. We can't make any promises on anything, but we are willing to work with the community and, and, um, look for a solution to try to help everybody.
Y es algo que la junta concejal pues está pendiente y ellos sí van a estar platicando sobre soluciones y ver cómo pueden trabajar con la comunidad para hacer, uh, llegar a una solución, pero no puede, no pueden prometer nada en este momento.
Thank everyone for coming out.
Y ahí agradezco a todos por venir hoy a platicar y traer esta, eh, esta preocupación.
Thank you.
Do I have a speaker for the audience?
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Elena Franco.
Good evening. My name is Fiona Franco.
Seguro que hay alguna esperanza.
I am volunteer of the Esperanza Neighborhood Project.
Yo vengo a comentar algo personal.
I also come here to comment on something personal.
En el momento de lo que están haciendo lo de la renta.
In regards to increase, the rent increase.
Lo que pasa en la situación mía en el trabajo, se está bajando el trabajo.
What happens in my situation, right now, uh, the employment, everything is going down and the purpose.
El dueño está vendiendo la compañía.
The landlord, uh, the prop, the company owner is selling the, the company.
Entonces el dueño actual que tiene, eh, el dueño que siempre tenemos ahorita.
So the current owner.
No sabemos si nos va a despedir o nos va a tener trabajando.
We don't know if he's going to lay off or, you know, if he's going to give us an opportunity to continue working.
Se está pagando la luz, se está pagando varios billetes en la casa.
Now we're paying very big.
Yo tengo que mantener a mi madre en el país.
I also have to support my family in my country who has seventy-seven years old.
Entonces, dos gastos para mí.
There's a lot more expenses for me and my husband.
Cuatro personas y a mi hija, la tengo en la universidad y tengo que pagar a la universidad de ella también.
And it's for, for people in my household. I also have my daughter who's in university also paying and supporting for that.
Entonces yo les pido de que si pueden ayudarnos en esa forma de que no nos suban demasiada la renta.
So yes, I ask you and, uh, to consider not increasing the rent at such a high, uh, percentage.
Gracias. Thank you.
Shalom.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and I echo, um, Council President Sico Ralobwe that we, we want to, our best to look into this. Gracias por venir. Quiero dejarles saber que como dijo la, la presidente del consejo, Susana Sico Ralobwe, vamos a prestar el asunto a esto y vamos a ver qué podemos hacer. The other comment that I wanted to make, uh, want to thank the volunteers that are working in, in Code Blue. Uh, I, I understand your point. I witnessed some of the same things that you saw. Uh, we have to do better, uh, when it comes to Code Blue in terms of sanitary, uh, the way things are. So, um, thank you for your volunteering and, uh, we will be, make sure that we do better moving forward. And like I said, I witnesses. I went there to see how everything was going. Not from here, from people, I saw it. So, uh, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that, uh, we will take care of whatever needs to be done and we will make improvements to, to the program. Thank you.
Do I have any other speakers? Saying none.
So President Joe.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, if you, if you wouldn't mind, um, the council may be interested to know. I've taken notes on the items regarding the Code Blue facilities. Um, I'll be following up on that as well.
Okay.
Um, and regarding, uh, the, the contract for the M E A, it does expire this year, but as all contracts and terms stay in effect and I'm glad to say that the conversations have been constructive and, uh, ingenious. Um, so I hope everyone has a great holiday.
Thank you for the information. Now, have a new German, please.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Sico Ralobwe.